Heavenly Father grant us the wisdom and the courage to make decisions that will benefit our constituents in the great county of Pluss County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from April 3 regular session. Move by Carter, second by Emory, any questions? Roll call.
Supervisor, can you agree?
Aye.
Dan, five.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye. F5O, here is your public comment, if there's a public comment on either side of the agenda.
My name is Jim White and I'm representing the Prince of Elijah. I don't suppose against crime. This is the eighth time that we're doing this. And I just say with pride that the Prince of Elijah have really been able to bring books to the library, if you want to say that. You folks have been very generous with the county's money. And it's wonderful to show, to see how generous he's been with their own money over these years. And that's why I'm here today. The Prince of Elijah were able to provide nineteen thousand dollars to the library in the past year. And that provided all of the books and magazines of the library. We really, really feel that they're able to do this, do again. And we count on you guys to come forward one more time. But I've got tickets here and I will wait for the recess. Thank you.
Jim, what's the day?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the first Saturday in May, always. That will be May 5th this year. And so I've actually avoided the conflict with your big celebration I'm doing, but we're going to get the period on this year. And if you'll do that, I'll depend on that.
Hold it ready a day.
Supervisor, billed by the representative of the county council, I wanted to thank Supervisor Carter for arranging and having a representative from the Department of Water Resources in Pluss County last week for a public meeting discussing the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan and the activities in the Department of Water Resources. Thank you very much for bringing that into our community, making it very accessible and easy for our citizens. I have issued my comments letter expressing my concerns of personal economy, how we have a city where the economic effect may adverse economic effect may possibly help our community. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you very much for doing that. That was a very nice public service committee committee. Thank you, Superintendent.
Good morning. I'm Jimmy Cooper. I represent Central Valley Gas Storage. I'm here with a very brief update on the project status. Central Valley Gas Storage is nearing ninety percent level of construction. Construction has been very safe and very few environmental issues in California, which is pretty acceptable, even in the California public authority. We will be operational sometime this summer. The provisions, the development agreement, the doses of reform, those provisions, the development, the some of those final steps are including documenting their roles, hiring, and the back end of those roles, and also on the new stacks. And we've been compiling all the provisions, so we'll get those backed up before our commercial operation gets. And as we, I know that's what I do, is start up all these projects and take them from Jay Murphy back to two thousand nine to that commercial operation. At some point in time, I'll transition out of those projects and then move on to whatever the next event is. And that is always good or sweet. It's, I feel like I own these projects and the reason why I look at that, I would like to introduce Richard Hyde. Richard Hyde is the Managing Director of the GL Resources Government Office. And Richard will be your principal contact and filling in my role as I transition out. I've known Richard tangentially with other projects and you are a very good man. Richard?
Good morning. I'm Mr. Russ. My name is Richard Hyde. I had the duty of honor of calling Father Richard. We have a challenge as well to meet this standard, so we will do our best and look forward to working each and every one of you as a member of our project. So thank you for everything that you've done and again, look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Jim. Good morning. Good evening. I've got updates here. I got a notification from the council on the Highway twenty project. They actually already started marking this week, so construction should start sometime next week. It's going to involve one-way traffic control, a portion of the summer. And we have a planning and safety meeting at my office, so if anybody would like to come. It's the next Tuesday, ten a.m. in my office, if you want further information. I'll ring back with the recommendation ideas in the next quarters to provide it to you. Some other things, Sonya from Rodeo, we were able to identify some specific grant hunt. We're on full contingency out here this year for the entire event. And we're moving forward with the fair projects. Again, we're able to identify personnel and this year we'll have full contingency plus a mountain of control and backup.
Any other public? Are you going to close another comment? Not for possession, counsel.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, under INMA, under the provisions of Government Section five, four, nine, five, six, twenty-nine, the board has discussed with legal counsel and personnel staff.
You're filming this?
And potential relegation.
Good.
Divided direction.
Need some room.
Item B, under the provisions of Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven, the board has discussed with Personnel Director, required mental updates regarding personnel matter and discipline, no formal action is taken, so there's nothing to report. Item C, under the provisions of Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven, the board commenced consideration of upper employee performance evaluation for the position of Deputy Director of the capable health services. This item is not completed and will be continued through November thirty, AM, or thereafter as soon as possible as we continue to go. Item D, under provisions of Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven, and code four, nine, five, seven, point six, the board supervisors commence convening with the personnel, staff, and county council to discuss negotiations, provide direction, and take action as necessary. This item is not completed and will be completed right of the date as the agenda goes.
Thank you, counsel. Nine of five items, staff reports, this is for the staff that base the board, items going on in their department.
I'm working for the Executive Director of the Fair Services. First of all, our V.I.P. took the board members for the fair party made a letter that's going to be at the fair and the, I believe the fair contract is on the board's agenda for the, for the fair. The other thing is, for the department, for the last nine months, for first nine months for the current, for this year, the department closed two hundred and twenty-three cases and opened two hundred and eighty-five. We've had a twenty-eight percent increase in the number of consumers coming in for services. Our after hours for the first nine months of the year, that's fifty-five evaluations. And March first was the first time the department's ever had five commitments in one normal work day. So the need for the department to increase on sample and will be contacted the board in the next regular sessions for more additional personnel. And the other thing that will come after the next four agenda has to do with doing alcohol psychiatry, contract with his view, that will be on the next four agenda. And that will allow us to move children to, to psychiatry and allow Dr. Rodeo no time for adults. We are struggling to maintain currently, although we've got a lot of really good staff and really good work. And the other thing is that we did successfully complete our certification for alcohol and drug that was done in the middle of this last month.
Any other staff we can tell it for? A nine, four, eight, we'll take the nine, ten items, personnel, DHAHS, health services, consider filling the vacancy of one flexibly, staff eligibility worker effective May one, two thousand twelve, and fills utilizing the merit system.
A vacancy occurred and one of our budget positions, eligibility worker, availability higher, either the one or two level, and ask for consideration now.
Under the board?
So.
Move by Carter?
Second.
Second by Emory, discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor, can you agree?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. F5O, and B, DHAHS, senior nutrition, consider authorizing an extra health vocational assistant position effective April eighteenth, two thousand twelve.
They have, the department has one employee that went off on medical leave and this person assists in giving some nutrition meals and various different jobs throughout the department. The department does not have somebody to backfill this, so they find time or extra help. This is an emergency, but they have.
Move by Dan? Second by Emory, discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor, can you agree?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. F5O, and C, department planning, building, buildings and grounds maintenance, consider authorizing first retirement benefits, employer share only for the following temporary part-time employee that has worked over thousand hours. Like dozens, I think, for healthy maintenance workers, effective April one, two thousand twelve.
And when we have our extra help employees that have not been in with first before, we try and limit their hours to nine hundred and ninety-nine hours, so that we don't have to pay first benefits on them. This individual was scheduled and did work over thousand hours, and so now is eligible for first benefits. And so the department is asking for, if we can pay first retirement benefits, only employer share, that employer will need to get up there eight percent to continue working. And this will be an obligation if this individual continues working in additional physical risks.
Has the department come forward and asked, or indicated at least, that they may want to make this a full-time employment situation?
Aye.
Rather than extra help, Steve?
Well, I haven't perhaps answered that yet. I'll get it earlier.
Okay.
Save some time. I'll just order the next one.
Okay, move for approval.
Move by Marshall?
Second.
Second by Dan? Discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. F5O, department planning, building, building and grounds.
I'm trying to do the topical conflict when I begin this.
Consider operating first retirement, employer share only for the following temporary part-time employee that has worked over thousand hours, goes with the deal, extra help to sodium, effective April one, two thousand twelve.
And this is the same situation as the item four?
Move for approval.
Move by Marshall?
Second.
Second by Carter, second? Roll call.
Supervisor, Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, F four oh one. And E, agmentary services, consider authorizing the following recommended step increases for the result of the work of providers completing the performance evaluation held April third, for Jokic, Demiano, Ag Commissioner, either ways of measures for record quality standards, or a group of my other housing director care operation, from step two to step three, effective March one, two thousand twelve.
And this is just, notice that the action that the board took in close session, noticing that step increase for the, to result of the evaluation.
Moved by Carter, second by Emory, discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury? Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, F5O. Quick recorder, consider operating an extra health clerical position temporary part-time, effective June one, two thousand twelve.
Central Services has two full-time employees and one of them will be taking on the credit duty, they reduced schedule starting June first and anticipated going out full-time September, and the department would like to overlap to help out and cover, allowing other individuals to help.
And speaking with Captain Lynn this morning, relative to this issue, she indicated that she did have money in her current budget to use. So I would move for approval.
Move by Marshall? Carter, second? Roll call.
Supervisor, can you agree?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, F5O. Nine of fifteen items, Pluss County fire degrees, an update regarding the county authorizing the distribution of Proposition one seventy-two funding to the special hire districts.
Good morning. Better or worse, I guess I'm spoken. Once again, we're in front of the board, asking that fire customers be allowed a share of the one seventy-two funds. We put the paperwork last week, the way we'd like to see it done, that we be allowed a share of the increase only, not taking from the share for the DA budget of the one seventy-two funds. But the increase only over the once, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, which was approximately one point five million dollars. That we be allowed a fifty percent share of any increase over that until we reach twenty-five percent of the total one seventy-two budget. We're like anybody else, we're a need of funds. We provide a service for the least amount of money to the county. We exist on property taxes only. And if there's no big increase in property taxes, we see no increase in our budgets. And we constantly get, you know, things put upon us to increase, to change your equipment, your turnouts, your CPRs, your backpacks, all that stuff. And we're just a need of funds. We figure this is a good method to get.
Yeah, this binder Peggy put together for Mark and I a week ago, and we haven't really got to go through the whole thing. But what I would, what I would like to propose, as you well know, I want to also pull in probation at this time.
Yeah.
Get everybody that was eligible at the time brought into the fold across the board, you know, which is the DA shop, the sheriff's court, places in their shop, as well as the fire district. So I would like to propose that we get all the entities together, Mark and myself, and go through a process.
Okay.
Soon.
Okay.
Because I have, I've got a proposal that is real short and sweet and simple, I think. But, you know, as in with Peggy, trying to figure out the percent of this increase and that increase, and what percentage happens between here and there, could be a little problematic on term, and this is Gary's opinion.
Okay.
So I'd like to be a little simpler than that.
Is this something that's going to come up probably the next meeting? It could be a lot?
No.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Will you appoint Supervisor Heaven and Supervisor Marshall to serve as the committee to work on this, so that they can start moving it over the next, do it yourself and hand it to it?
Yes, you may. We could create today, if you wish, an ad hoc committee of no more than two supervisors, plus any county staff who can handle the process.
Just to keep it moving, so that they can meet, so you don't have to continue to come up to the full board, so that the two supervisors are authorized to meet, and we can keep this moving.
And we can, was it talk director of the committee?
Yes, yeah, so that it's a committee.
Be in the room.
In the room, yeah. No, no, you, you folks, and the two board members, and probably county council, and
Audrey.
So that you can start working that on a daily basis, not waiting for every Tuesday to work on it.
And I would, I would want somebody to share a thought with us there. Just, I think it can be done very swiftly.
Okay.
But, you know, we need everybody in one room.
And then this, this is something that's going to happen between having this meeting?
I hope so.
Okay.
And as soon as we can pull all the resources together on our end, we'll get you guys a day and do it.
Okay.
Is there a question supervisor, to create this meeting?
I'll move, that we create the ad hoc committee, I'm just going to call the one that's going to be the ad hoc committee. And to include two members of the board, Supervisor Marshall, Supervisor Heaven, the county council, and Audrey.
Move by Dan, second by Emory, discussion? Any, Sheriff, VA, probation, fire districts?
I hear you, Sheriff.
Audrey? We will coordinate individuals on those plans. And as soon as I get those cats sorted out, we'll get a little view of your, who, who do you want to be quaint? Quaint person that you want?
We'll get that, we'll get that.
Okay. And then we'll look in there.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Motion is second.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor, can you agree?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Thank you, only got part mark for both. Nine twenty, District Attorney, consider approving contingency request in the amount of nine hundred sixty-eight dollars, eight ten, purchase, finance, purchase of one Dell laptop computer for the Pluss County District Attorney's office. Further approve purchase of the laptop Dell computer in the amount of nine hundred sixty-eight.
Good morning, Dave Marshall, District Attorney's office. Any questions?
We have no room in your budget.
So you don't have nine hundred sixty-eight eighty left in your budget? That's my question.
Yeah.
I mean, just spend it up, when you're bankrupt, don't give it.
That's the direction of the board.
I mean, no, I mean, we're running, we're definitely lying, even though it seems silly.
That's okay.
This is simple, after, no.
You're already bankrupt?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, and, well, why don't we just make it ten thousand if you're bankrupt?
That's fine. Three thousand would work.
That work?
Yeah, ten thousand, fine.
Move for approval.
Move by Marshall, second by Dan. How's it working?
It's not, it blew up.
The one, this one?
It blew up.
Oh, okay. Roll call. Exactly.
Supervisor, can you agree? Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye, F5O. Sheriff, consider approving a request for proposal for inmate food services at Pluss County Jail and operate in experimental design. Further set May ten at three P.M. to receive and hold concealed hits and direct to work to publish post-RFP.
Good morning, working on WU's chair of department, morning chair. I've been reporting for two previous pages in regards to the food services of, at the direction of the last time we met, we did have a meeting with our current vendor for food services, and trying to mitigate some of the issues that I have brought to your attention. And I'm now with Supervisor Dan, CEO, CFO, and continue to have meetings with the food managers of the hospital. And I regret to inform you that it is still my opinion that we should move forward with the food service RFP due to many inconsistencies that I see in our current provider.
Pleasure, the board? Great, thank you.
And you've, you've had meetings with the hospital administration?
Yes.
And, you know, I've had with them as well, trying to make them aware of some of the issues we have, and they've not resolved us. Does that find your Chevy?
That is correct.
There's a lot of work needed tomorrow morning for the hospitals.
And I personally made a phone call to Kirby and letting him know that this agenda item runs on today's date of time, and the reason for it, so.
I was in attendance at the last meeting with Dale Kirby and the management. And there was outlines some pretty critical items that needed to be addressed, and it goes back into my address, made a very well aware, that my department was over with one hour. So didn't seem to be able to, maybe have been addressed on the matter.
Mike, could you provide for me just a brief outline of your concern, so when I get questioned one morning at the hospital board meeting, I can speak, someone will tell me? Just, you know, you don't have to read it while I just, you know.
Just as a brief example, I have an officer who is in charge of compliance, to make sure we don't have compliance, which had fifteen issues. One of those things is temperatures of the foods. Cold items need to be below certain degree, hot items need to be above certain degree. When dinners are received, they need to be, so many towel around them, and one of the logs that we keep is whether the temperatures are at what they should be for the month of January, we have.
Yeah, well, I believe what Supervisor Marshall was just asking for was just give him a little list, so he can speak intelligently, rather than bring right into it.
Okay. Temperatures, temperatures is one issue missing.
No, I just mean written ones.
Oh, I provide you with.
Yes.
Providing for your concern, sort of one morning, when I get beat up on this issue of the hospital.
You said give me, I was like, okay, I'll give you.
Yes, this is it.
I'll, I'll move the RFP with the inmates.
Move by Dan, second by Carter? Discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And Audrey.
Aye, F five O. I would be considering purchase of two Dell laptop computers for the first county in our office to pass force. Dell computer in the amount of one hundred forty-seven, sixty-six, fifty-six for each.
Good morning, Bert. Mike, my old district attorney's department. Basically asking to use asset forfeiture funds to purchase two Dell laptop computers. Our current ones are outdated and not meeting our technology.
My only comment is you better look at, go to central services because the DA price is significantly less than yours. And maybe in specs, they look pretty similar.
Ours are upgraded quite a bit more. We're going, we went through the sheriff's department, it's a contract through Dell, so.
I would, I would go check with central services on pricing.
Is this a state-based contract you're working off of?
No, this is asset forfeiture. But as far as the contract, the sheriff's department, I don't know if that's a Dell contract that you have. But I know these computers are upgraded quite a bit to the point where.
I didn't see a whole lot that was really upgraded, so between the two, so I would suggest you.
Well, I have, I have different copies of people I've been with that, too.
About June now.
Well, I think they're, yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, we're looking at the DA, we're looking at yours. That's what she's saying.
The system's pretty much the same. So, that's, that's just, I think you ought to look at central services as well. Find where you can get the best deal. That's all.
And you have money in asset forfeiture?
Yeah.
I saw some.
The binding area is second by Carter. Any other discussion?
Is that a copy out that they checked with central services for approval?
Yeah. The motion is to approve the purchase of two laptops that are special.
All right. Let's go to where.
Please, that's the base. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Audrey.
Aye, F five O. Item C, consider rejecting the two personal watercraft and trailer, the bids for the two personal watercraft and trailer for the sheriff's department as received and opened on April second. At ten A M. as follows, good times motorsports for thirty thousand five hundred dollars.
Well, obviously, you know, it was.
Got one bid.
One bid. Uh, I think there was, we, we ended up getting four or five bids, but we only received one bid. So we'd like the, the other bids came in later.
So you would undo this and then.
I, I can't plan to receive it, but.
Okay.
So county did not.
Move by Bam. Second by Ann.
Discussion council?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good times motorsports did submit a time of bid?
Yes.
And the other did not?
Yes.
My understanding?
It's my understanding, yes, sir.
So, do we have to take good times bid because it was, it was received? And under all conditions, your bid process?
I bet you said they are received.
Or the other.
All the others.
There was only one time we did super.
I'll, I'll rescind my motion if all of them weren't received late. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
I apologize.
I rescind my motion.
So we're back to the spread. Go ahead and explain.
Basically, in, in order to meet our bid process, yeah, we might go that as far as voting in waterways, I have to exceed three bids. In order to move forward, I have to exceed three bids. So basically.
It doesn't, it doesn't have that outline in your background? So it's a little bit hard to tell from reading this work.
And that one exceeded specifications anyway, so it was thirty thousand five hundred. My grant allows only twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Okay. I don't want to say five hundred.
So I have been contacted by the sheriff's department and I advised them that a bid was right. That, that was a, that could not be waived by the county.
Right. Right.
So I will move again.
As a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Aye, F five O, item D. Now, consider approving your request for bids. Notice bidders for two personal watercraft with trailer for the sheriff's department operator, the chairman to sign. Further set in May ten at three thirty to receive an open sealed bid and direct clerk to publish post notice to bid. Move by Ann.
Second.
Second by Carter. Any discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Aye, F five O. Thank you. Item E, consider waiving the county permit fees associated with the courthouse backup generator project.
My chairman, here, showed off the sheriff's department. Uh, as you know, we're currently in the process of the RFP, uh, project of the courthouse generator. During discussions with the vendors, they have answered several questions. However, there's one I can't answer, that's the county waiver for the NIPs associated with this project. So I stand here today hoping to have an answer for that.
This is county permit or city?
It's a county permit. If I understand this.
So are we asking the city to waive their permit fees as well?
I would like, there's a lot that can happen, but I understand the sidewalk with city. So, through discussions with vendors, there's different options that they may take. It may include some sidewalk reconstruction, so the city may come and work.
If this is work on our courthouse, it's moved, that we waived our permit fees for us.
Second.
Move by Ann, second by Marshall. I guess the inspection for the contractors is working out okay with staff?
So far, yeah.
Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Aye, F five O. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Nine thirty-five, I, um, behavioral health services consider terminating agreement C zero six dash two two one and C zero nine dash two two eight six between the county inclusive department of behavioral health and Medtram Direct Incorporated, not rising in the, for the people to notify. Medtram Direct Incorporated has sent.
Point. Um, so what this is, is we started for this back when we had Avatar, with anosalzy. We had what this contract was for, so it's a duplicate service. So in paying for anosalzy, there's no need for what Medtram provides. And that's the reason for the termination of contract.
Pleasure, the board.
Aye.
Second.
Move by Carter, second by Ann. Comments? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye, F five O. Item B, consider approving agreement number one two dash zero three zero dash R between county inclusive behavioral health department and the forty-fourth district acting association or stamp out a stigma dinner show rally can be held on May eleventh, two thousand twelve, effective May ten, two thousand twelve through May twelve, two thousand twelve, with terms and conditions set forth. And authorize the interim director of behavioral health to sign on behalf of the board supervisor.
And this is just the, uh, the stamp out stigma of the dinner tickets that, uh, that I brought it to the board? Um, but that is the activity that Kate Bear is going to be doing, that dinner show that evening?
So.
Move by Carter.
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Audrey.
Aye, F five O. Uh, nine forty, item in central services and behavioral health services consider approving a notice to bidder for ADA compliant door operator improvements for the department of behavioral health main entrance. And operate the chairman to sign the notice to bidders. Further set May second at ten A M. to receive an open sealed bid.
Good morning. Uh, the bid process was facilitated before the proposed ADA improvements. Through the set process, three vendors expressed interest in the project and intended the county's staff to walk through. All three vendors declined to bid into their end to provide the required materials for the project. Apparently, there's some kind of certification with the ADA doors. Um, however, with, um, with assistance from the planning building staff, we've down moved contacts to possess the required certification. So that means that we'd like to re-advertise the bid so we can reach out to these individuals and seek their participation in the work.
Move by Carter. Second by Ann. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Audrey.
Aye, F five O. Nine forty-five, county library, consider approving performer agreement between county inclusive library and Dell Warzone for a one-time magical performance at the joint kickoff event of the children's summer reading program and teen summer reading program on June twenty-first with terms and conditions set forth in the agreement and authorize the chair to sign. We have the library. Um, has plenty of time here. We will continue this item.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah.
Is it that you go for it?
Um. Yeah, let's kick off item B as well. Okay. We're gonna get more on.
I think we are.
Well, I'm sure, like, my clock. On the computer, we've got nine forty-two, so.
So, all right. Well, she might walk in, so shame on me.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's go contingencies. I don't think, but it comes out.
Okay, yeah.
All right. We have three items.
All of them. Number two, though, we need to do. Or something. We've got the public key. Right. No, no. Okay. All we can say. And so.
Move by.
Second.
Move by Carter, second, second by Ann. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Man?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Aye, F five O. Supervisors and reports, calling.
Um, attended the sheriff's common meeting slash DWR, what's it? Very well attended, good meeting. So thank you, please. Um, I helped color these two ages with a limeside for the Easter event. Last Thursday night, I always find it with all thousands of eggs. Uh, and I'm also mentoring Haley Crusade from high school, receiving projects. And she's doing voter registration. She did one out in front of a restaurant last week. Um, she registered probably three people. It was, it was non-personal, so, um, it was actually pretty nice. She was out there several hours and she's working Kathy Moran and she's gonna do another one. So around the county or whatever. So it's, it's been kind of fun working with her and helping her. And it was nice to see a young, young person getting involved, uh, returning registration. You know, people aren't, aren't registered, so. Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, thank you.
That's.
There's kind of one, okay.
Did we have forty-five yet?
Forty-one. Today's, most of my efforts are lost telling this notebook is about stuff like love and nature plan. And, uh, reading the plan, reading about the plan, asking questions, making comments. And we're working on one more public comment letter that needs to be in by Friday. So, it's a work in progress. We're fighting for rural, uh, protection of rural property and there is some, uh, some of these.
Limited resources. Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
The rest of the report, I testified last Tuesday on the draft changes to S P twelve seventy-eight, which is the proposed, um, fix to some of these issues. Doesn't go even nearly far enough and it's a good, it's a good step in the right directions and we need to work on that. But we, we had Mary Kido come up to the municipal meeting from R C R C. Mary Kido's gonna be working on it as the R C R C lobbyist. So she's gonna be coming back after meeting with, oh, correct, with Denise as well. And so I think utilizing R C R C, keep this in place, because she knows, because she has a record, Mary has a record, and she might be able to address some of the issues. One of the questions I asked you the other day was about what happens when a plomar or a loomar is submitted? Because they're referencing human maps without allowing any of the plomars or loomars to be submitted in that. So when people make the adjustments, they're not even recognizing. I mean, the details are so far behind the actual plan that we're gonna be put in a situation where we're possibly gonna be taking people's property rights by not approving development applications. So we could be under a regular for taking situation. But if we approve them in the same breath, we get sued by the environmentalists for violating, um, some of the provisions in the original law. So the state is really putting us in a situation where we can do nothing at all. And anytime we move, we're gonna sue. So we're, you know, these requirements are extremely important. So we've got to address some of these because the date to have these implemented is twenty, is twenty first?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty of her comments on the subject of protection. So what you're talking about has more to do with the menus, um, issues and how it's going to be implemented on grounds of various.
So that was my fault and several constituents that DWR, this is just an outline of the plan, which is here's the plans we can get voted on and the legislature, you know, mandated this. But we'll give you the details later, somewhat like the feds. So, the constituents were asking, what, what's the details of it? Again, are the central areas, the board gonna vote on A or C? What proposal? And they couldn't answer that.
They don't, they, the state can't answer it. But then, then, of the details back on board to implement the lobby pass house. The state's been done.
So at the mercy of the lobbyists, right, the law, after.
I'd say the regulators, they're interpreting it. It's the regulators who are interpreting it in their own way.
It's crazy.
So two issues, we go working with Southern County and Southern County for formation districts. Sure comments.
At least there's one more, and we're, we're working with.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's, uh, bring back to the nine forty-five, item in county library. Hi, Wendy.
Good morning.
You've had a bump once already.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm very good. It's going to range to, uh, all contracts, which is set according to the county libraries to allow the owners for doing long-term events at the library. And what we're looking to do, this year for the summer, we're maybe doing a children's summer program which we've been doing all the libraries for three years. But we're also gonna start a teen summer reading program and adult summer reading program. We have the main library here in Crewe. And so we're doing a joint kickoff of all three of those summer reading programs on June twenty-first of the evening. And we're asking this, um, coordinator to come and to do the magician's show for us. So that's. That's okay. Any questions?
What time would you find for?
Um, it's gonna be in the evening, I think, six thirty.
You've done this in the past, haven't you?
Um, we've done.
Something similar?
Yes, in terms of the contract or in terms of the summer reading program?
The kickoff reading program.
Uh, yes, we have.
And how many people, ten to kickoff?
Uh, the total we kick out when we begin.
And so we had the clues of.
Yes. Down at the main library.
Really, just a, a technicality. I have a sense you're using the old gender request one.
Yeah, sometimes.
Okay. Do I guess that's looking for an RJ number on there?
Yes.
Sixty.
Pleasure, the board. Move by Ann.
Second.
Second by Marshall. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
and Evans.
Aye, that's five oh, I'd be consider accepting the grant in the amount of fifteen hundred from County H R A. Further approve an agreement between County inclusive library and the Glenn, or inclusive Glenn Community Community Agency for support of the mobile library program affecting January one, three, September thirty first, two thousand twelve. With terms and conditions set forth in the agreement and authorize the county librarian to sign on behalf of the board.
Um, yes, this is a grant that we'd like for from, um, H R A, and we received fifteen hundred dollars for, uh, each of two years. Um, and so this first contract is for this, the current visitor that we're in, and that fifteen hundred dollars is authorized to pay for, uh, the bus drivers' car, his, his salary.
That's them.
Move by Andrew, second by Carter, any other discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor and jury?
Aye.
Carter? Dan?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
and Evans.
Aye, that's five oh, thanks, please. Nine fifty, item, Public Works, consider finding a reasonable relationship between the development impact fees collected in conjunction with residential development in Arbuckle area and the Wildwood Road rehabilitation project. Further designate the development impact fees collected in fund zero two six nine seven and fund zero two seven one for residential development in Arbuckle area, two, the Wildwood Road rehabilitation project. More than.
Good morning. Uh, this request would provide funding to construct a needed footprint on Wildwood Road. Uh, development impact fees substantially, uh, are from one area, in Arbuckle. And so, the amount of projects we would have to build and.